Welcome, everybody, to tonight's meeting of the Uba City Council. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Harris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Boom Garden.
Here.
Councilmember Cardoza.
Here.
Councilmember Espandola.
Here.
And Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
All right. Y'all could please stand for pledge, excuse me. We have, hold on one second. Invocation/Inspiration by Kim Cooper. There she is. And we will follow that up with Pledge of Allegiance. Jesse, if you wouldn't mind doing the honors.
If you would just bow your head for a moment. Heavenly Father, we humbly come to you in the name of Jesus. We come to your throne of grace. Father, we invite you into this place and we ask for your wisdom. We thank you for being with us, guiding, leading, and directing us. We ask all this in Jesus' name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you both very much. And we just returned from closed session. City Attorney, can we have a report? Anything reportable?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was no reportable action taken in closed session. I would like to note for the record that Councilmember Shaw was available for all closed-session items at 5:05. However, he recused himself for item B.
Thank you very much. Do we have any agenda modifications? Nothing at all. We'll move on to ceremonial presentation. This one's a proclamation in honor of the Trauma Intervention Program, assistance to Uba City Fire Department. You know, when I was contacted about the possibility, request for a proclamation for TIP, so-called TIP program. Of course, that's a no-brainer to say yes to that. They did a great job. But also, you know, I'm also reminded of the folks who've made big agencies, and the nationwide agencies are the bigger local agencies and paid folks, to include the American Red Cross, the Uba City Unified School District, Lynda Fire Department, Uba City Police, Sutter County Fire, Marysville Fire, and Lynda Fire. All did a great job and came to bat for our community and the support of our fire department and our folks, and so we do appreciate that. Today, we have an honor of recognizing some volunteers who do one heck of a job. They've been around in our community four years. I worked with them closely in a past life. And I tell you, it's an organization that, it's critical, where we lie on them. And in fact, some of these, the folks are out there doing things for a living, could not do what they do if it wasn't for TIP and those volunteers. So if I can please have, I have four names here. Anybody else who is here from TIP that would like to come up, please feel free. Counsel as well. Amy Mock, Lisa Marie Helmer, Cynthia Castaneda, and Teal Graver.
Sorry.
You can't hear it? Full house. I should've came out to you. All right. Yeah, clearly. You typically stand right there if I can squeeze in for a second, because I think we have, yeah, we have pictures here. I'm gonna read this. And is the microphone on? Is it just turned down low? Okay. City Council and the Uba City Fire Department would like to take this opportunity to recognize, Jesse, you can feel free to come down, Chief. Recognize four TIP volunteers who went above and beyond assisting the impacted residents of our local first responders. Please welcome, here they are. Amy Mock, Lisa Marie Helmer, Cynthia Castaneda, and Teal, is it Graver?
Yes.
Okay. How many times you asked that in your life? A lot. And Mock, I'm sure, same thing. All right. Thanks to Terrell on that one. On Monday, February 10th, approximately 4:50 p.m., the Uba City Fire Department was dispatched to a large fire in an apartment complex located on McCray Way. The McCray Way incident resulted in strong cooperation and collaboration with numerous agencies, including our mutual and automatic aid partners. Uba City Police, Sutter County Fire, Marysville Fire, Lynda Fire, Red Cross, and TIP all played significant roles in mitigating this incident. Fire personnel remained throughout the night, performing overhaul, salvage, and maintaining the chain of custody of the fire investigation. The American Red Cross and TIP were called in to assist with the logistics and emotional support of the 75 residents who were displaced by this fire. TIP volunteers Amy Mock, Lisa Marie Helmer, Cynthia Castaneda, and Teal Graver arrived to assist Fire Marshal Jesse Frius in gathering information from all the families displaced and provided much-needed emotional and logistical support in finding temporary shelter, services, and basic necessities. Now therefore be resolved that I, Sean Harris, Mayor of the City of Uba City, and on behalf of the entire City Council, would hereby commend, thank, and compliment the Trauma Intervention Program, and especially the named volunteers, Amy Mock, Lisa Marie Helmer, Cynthia Castaneda, you guys are popping, and Teal Graver, for the services they provided to their fellow citizens who were displaced by the McCray Way fire, but also for the excellent service they provided to the Uba City Fire Department. Their efforts bring great honor to the Trauma Intervention Program and strengthens our community partnership done today. All right, well, here I have something for all four of you, it looks like. Are all four of you over here? Okay. There's one right next to me. All right. And forgive me, I don't know you, I don't really know you personally, so. And there you are. All right, well, congratulations and thank you. I think some folks want to put your picture. Would any of you care to say anything? I'm not surprised. I'm not surprised. That's what they do. Well, absolutely. Absolutely. Well, that's good. Thank you so much for coming, all you folks. You really do a valuable service, and I tell you, we're better because of you. So thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
You both are volunteers as well?
Yeah.
What a great thing. A lot of work, sir. Thank you for that. All right, very good. Next, we'll have public communication, appearance of interested citizens. Everyone is welcome and encouraged to participate in the meeting. Public comment is taken on items listed on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. Anybody have any comment from anything not on the agenda? Saying none, we will move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the City Council staff or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Would anyone from the public like to speak on these items? All right.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
Make the motion for consent calendar, item three, four, and five.
Through the mayor. Before a second, I'd like to remove and discuss item four.
All right. So we'll move forward with items three and five.
Okay.
Would you make that motion again?
I'd like to make a motion to approve consent calendar for items three and five.
Second.
All right. All those in favor approving three and five?
Aye.
Opposed? None. And item number four, you have the floor, sir.
Through the mayor. Just wondering if staff could give us a brief update on the timing. I get questions about the houses and the demolition and timing for Bridge Street.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So there are three houses on the north side that need to be demolished. We're coordinating with the utility companies to disconnect the services to those homes and then putting out to bid to actually demolish the homes. So those three homes will be demolished over the next couple of months. In terms of timing of the project, the estimate for the project is significant, in the range of about $8 million. And so staff is working on a funding strategy to bring forward to council to discuss how will we fund that project, you know, whether it's a combination of utilizing our impact fees, as well as our SP1 money, and then road funds, gas tax. But based upon that price tag, it's pretty much the full allocation of all of those funds. And so that's something that we need to bring before council to vet out how that project will be funded.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any member of the public, once again, would like to comment on that? If not, we can go forward with any further comment or questions, comment or questions, or a motion.
Through the mayor, make a motion to authorize the city manager, on behalf of the Housing Successor Agency, to execute a grant deed and necessary documents to sell real property located at 815 and 817 Bridge Street, assessors parcel number 52-413-006, in the amount of $205,000 to the City of Uba City.
I'll second that.
All right. Motion to approve, and a second for item number four. All those in favor?
Through the mayor.
Yeah, hold on. I got one more here.
Sorry, I believe there's also items B and C.
Let's see, correct your.
I'm turning the page.
My bad. Thank you.
Also move item B, authorize city manager, on behalf of the City of Uba City, to purchase the real property located at 815, 817 Bridge Street, APN, assessors parcel number 52-413, in the amount of $205,000. And item C, authorize the finance director to place sale proceeds in the successor agency low and moderate income housing asset fund.
And I'll second that again.
So we're gonna resecond. All those in favor of A, B, and C approval?
Aye.
Aye.
Unopposed, unanimous approval. Thank you very much. We'll honor item number six, Pluma Street Water Tower refurbishment.
I should've just brought my materials with me and stayed over here. All right, the item before you tonight is the Pluma Street Water Tower. So the Pluma Street Water Tower is a visible emblematic city landmark. The Pluma Street Escape Project was completed in 2009, and at that time, there were options evaluated for refurbishing the tower, putting some artistic elements on it. But based upon the economic downturn, that did not take place. So the proposed project includes removal of the existing fiber optic materials and equipment, patching, cleaning, and preparing the entire structure, the legs and the tank for new paint, painting, and then as an add alternate to the bid, we're going to bid the installation of vinyl signage on the north and south sides, signage that looks like this. If council approves authorizing to bid the project, we would advertise in March, award the contract in April for painting over the summer. The estimated fiscal impact is $180,000, $125,000 for the maintenance and painting, $35,000 for the vinyl signage, and then $20,000 for construction management. Back in 2018, council approved having the Uba Center Arts do a call to artists, RFP, to evaluate different options for the tank. At that point in time, the RFP would have requested artists to submit proposals. They would have been given, a selected candidate would have been given a $500 honorarium to develop that proposal more and then to cost out. And so if council wanted to continue with that concept, we're proposing to go ahead and bid with the vinyl signage as an add alternate, just to see what that cost is. But there's always the option out there of continuing to work with the Uba Center Arts to evaluate other options for that tank, separate from just the Uba City vinyl signage. There's currently $135,000 available, enough to cover the painting. And so regardless, as we come forward to award the project, we'd have to find additional funds for the vinyl signage anyway. Alternatives are to approve only the maintenance and painting of the tower at the estimated cost of $125,000, delay the project until next fiscal year. However, I note, this tank has not been painted in quite a while and it needs to be done, or cancel the project completely. So the recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving the graphic design and painting specifications for the refurbishment of the Pluma Street Water Tower and authorize advertisement for bids on the project. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Anybody from the public care to comment? All right. Anybody from the council care to comment?
Through the mayor.
Yes.
Couple of questions on this. Ms. Langley, when we have discussed this project in the past, it's more than just painting that needs to be done to the water tower. I realize it's a landmark for our community, but if we don't do anything, this thing is going to continue to deteriorate and could be really an unsafe.
It's made of metal, so over time, if you don't address the painting, it would, could rust. And then, you know, so there needs to be just that basic level of maintenance unless there's any desire to just remove the tank completely and be done with it. That's always an option as well. But as a minimum, staff would recommend painting the tank, and then in terms of any type of graphics, that's something that we can evaluate once we actually have the bid for the vinyl graphics. The Uba Center Arts, they were estimating concepts being anywhere from $50,000 to $100,000 for artwork on that tank. And then I just want to note, the vinyl graphics does not address any lighting of the tank, and so that would be something that would have to be addressed in the future as well if council wanted the tank to be uplit.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All right. I like the idea, you know, being on the board there, Uba Center Arts, they have, making a phone call after this, they do have the ability to get grant funding, which would be matching funds. So we, if we, of course, we need to go forward, it seems like, with the maintenance/painting of the tank, and then it doesn't hurt to get the costing of the wrap. But if we held off until we can get some more formalized meetings with Uba Center Arts and those folks to see what potential, we could leverage some money to get something really more vibrant and noteworthy up there. That does, of course, that doesn't look bad as proposed, but if we could ramp it up at no cost to us, may as well look into it and try.
Okay.
That would be, is my recommendation. In fact, I'll make that motion. Do I need to do it again, sir? All right. Do we have the public wanting to comment on something now?
Yes.
All right. We'll hold off on that, and we have changed.
Good evening, gentlemen and ma'am. Yeah, my question is, are we, is the tank still holding water? Are we still using it as a water tank, or is it just a beautiful tank in the middle of Uba City?
I believe that latter, slash landmark and whatnot, yeah.
Yeah, the tank is not operational.
No.
Through the mayor, I agree with you. I think that if there's an opportunity to partner up with the Arts Council, too, for the art piece, let's do the maintenance. I can support that.
Is that a second, then?
That's a second.
All right, very good. We have first and second to move forward. Motion is to proceed as directed. However, we're not going to do anything decorative until we can confirm with the Uba Center Arts to see what they have in the till and perhaps get some matching funds to make something more decorative, which ended up being cost neutral to the city.
Okay, just to be clear through the mayor.
Find the money, that is.
Yeah, it's, we're gonna spend the money that's already there to basically paint it, preserve it, and then everything beyond that, including design, including anything we do, would come back and all have our input.
Yes.
Everything, okay. Thank you.
All right.
Good, Mr. Mayor.
We all good? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Unopposed, none. Thank you very much, Diana. Uh, let's see. Use permit ordinance amendment.
All right, so this is a kind of a dual effort here between myself and the city attorney. And so if we're on the item, there we go.
Yeah, you're good. Welcome.
Welcome. So good evening, Mayor, members of the council. So Ben Moody, your Development Services Director, in partnership with the city attorney, Shannon Chaffin, will present this item. Basically, at your January 21st meeting, council provided direction to staff to look at providing an ordinance amendment that would give a tool to the council to basically have an option in our use permit process to allow direct review by council, should council deem that necessary for the community to streamline or to provide community benefit. And so through this process, tonight, we're introducing an ordinance that would provide that option for you, and the city attorney can provide some technical background on that.
Thank you, counsel. If you don't mind, I'll jump in at this particular point. This is the same ordinance that was before you when you initiated it. There have not been any changes. However, this matter was presented to the Planning Commission for a recommendation. After due consideration and extensive discussion, the Planning Commission did recommend against voting it, approving it on a six-one vote. The nothing as far as the, there are no additional recommendations that were made by the Planning Commission with regards to any sort of modifications associated with this item, and I'm available for any questions at your convenience.
Thank you very much. Anybody from the public care to comment? All right, we can bring back to council for any other comments or a motion.
Through the mayor. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Moody. I did listen to the audio file of the discussion at the Planning Commission, and I thought both you and the city attorney did a nice job of trying to, trying to explain the intent of this council in regards to this conditional use permit ordinance. I found, I found the discussion at the Planning Commission concerning in as much as, for whatever reason, and I'm not exactly sure why, there was some concern that this council was trying to abolish the Planning Commission. Not sure where that comes from. It certainly didn't come from any discussions that I've had with any of my four colleagues up here. And so I'm struggling to understand where they were headed with those discussions. I'm a little concerned about the fact that they, they were concerned about lack of communication. My recollection of this item is it's been, it's been something that has been off and on discussed since January of 2019. And if there was such a concern, why, none of, well, I was not contacted in regards to what my motivation or intentions were in supporting this ordinance. There were, and I'm gonna use the term accusations of good old boy, and this was all political. I assure you, I am not a good old boy, and I assure you, there is no political motivation in my support of this particular ordinance. This is simply a tool in the toolbox that it would take three of us up here to execute on, should we think or feel that an item could be expedited through a development process to move it forward. I will again mention that, that one of the priorities of this council is to be open for business and to facilitate development. And the notion that this would be, you know, picked and choose for some other reason other than that, to me, does not sit well, frankly. So I think there's a level of communication that's going to need to occur between the Planning Commission and members of this council. I think we owe that to them. In as much as they seem to be confused about what our intent is, and we're apparently, without any recommendations coming back from them, are changing just a flat no, with the exception of one planning commissioner, you know, it just confuses me that, that they couldn't come up with something other than good old boy and politicians. That being said, I am full supporter of this ordinance. I would certainly offer up to the mayor to be one of those that meets with the Planning Commission. This is something, frankly, that, without casting any aspersions towards anyone, something I've asked for since, almost since the time I was elected. The Planning Commission is a body that's appointed by the council and should need, they should be representatives of the city, but they also need to be representatives of the goals and objectives of the council as well. We are working very hard with the development community to work with them on things like impact fees and streamlining the opportunity to build and bring not only new business, but retain existing businesses as well. And I think we need to make sure that our Planning Commission is aligned with the goals and priorities of the City Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Very well said. Anybody else?
Through the mayor. I also listened to, and it is clear that, at least in my opinion and listening and hearing throughout, we have done multiple workshops to bring our commissions and boards to be aligned within the priorities that we set forth, which we did in a manner that I think was allowing to bring in a variety of folks to give input to those priorities. And I sense that there is some confusion or some differences of vision of what we believe as council members and what our planning commissioners are considering at this point. I think that, you know, Agenda 10, we're gonna talk about, you know, the boards and the commissions on other items, but I'd like to maybe suggest at this moment that in there, maybe we need to have some sort of workshop to help our commissioners understand the priorities and how we are aligned as a council to those priorities. And hopefully, that would help with some of the miscommunication or misunderstandings in this. And at first, I was really hesitant with this particular amendment, and I've really, I've gone through and looked at it closer, and this is an opportunity for us to maybe think out of the box, honestly, innovation that is probably not happening. So it's an opportunity for us that maybe we should consider. Let's not throw it out yet. And I'd be willing to explore this, because there's also a sunset. It's not a long-term ordinance. There is an end date to it. I would be more concerned if there was a long-term date set to this. But I believe that there needs to be a better opportunity for us as City Council and planning commissioners to be much more aligned. And I think the representation of that is allowing, you know, future commissioners that perhaps we are able to, as each individual council, be able to recommend individuals for those commissions and change the process that we have currently.
All right, thank you.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
I happen to be at the meeting, and how I took it was, is sort of like Mark said, we're given special, special treatment to certain folks, and, you know, someone puts theirs in three months ago, and if someone puts theirs in today, they can get pushed up the system quicker or something like that. And their concerns were, it should be fair, it should be equal for everybody. They should go through the process, and there shouldn't be any moving up the ladder quickly type thing, is how I took it and how they kind of explained it to me afterwards. So I think we should sit down and just, like I said, we don't necessarily have to have a workshop, but how we could do it properly, we all sit down with all of them, have a discussion, and say, because they said, you know, they're taking, the comments were made, they take the grunt for us, they do all the work for us, and then they present it to us, and now it's being taken away, and they kind of had their feelings hurt, because it got moved up the, moved up a chain quickly, is how I took it. So I think we just need to sit down and talk to them. It kind of, even though it was mentioned a few months ago, it caught them off guard, and that's how I got the interpretation with the group. Their feelings were hurt, and we're taking their job away from them, and that's why they said, well, why do they have a planning commission? Because we're taking their job away from them. So that's how I, the comments that I'd like to make about that.
All right, thank you. Sir?
Through the mayor. First of all, Mr. Moody, thank you so much for the job you're doing, and I know you got caught in a interesting position last week, and, but I will say, I'm glad that you are the department head, and I'm glad that you are changing the culture with where we're going in development of this city. So kudos to you, and thank you. I wanted to say that publicly, so. Where do we get back to this? It gets back to communication to start with. And with that, we have, as it's been expressed, had many workshops, many dialogue that's gone back and forward in expressing what the goals are, what the priorities are of this city, the fact that we are going to be open for business, the fact that we want to think outside of the box, and...
And let's face it, people, in the last eight to nine years, there's been very little economic growth around here. And we have to kick this economy in the backside because when we get to all the underlying issues that we have throughout the city, it all boils down to dollars and cents that was based upon the budget for years and years with economic growth happening. And we've got to get development started. That's what's going to bring people here, then that's going to bring jobs here, and it's kind of this snowball effect. You get houses, you get jobs, you get technology, you get more money. It just, everything rolls, and it works together as one engine. So with this, I can say that I'm, I'm kind of taken back by the fact that some of the planning commissioners did not realize that this has been in the works for a year. And this was not just something that was an idea that was, as it was said that night, spearheaded, you know, by one council member. I was just the one that kept beating the drum. And Ben, this gets back to your leadership because we asked for this out of the, the culture that was part of the city a year ago, and it basically died on the vine. And we kept asking for it to come back and come back, and I really do appreciate you following through with the, the council's wishes and at least, you know, bringing it forward so we could have the discussion. So with that, I want to help clarify a couple of things. And Mr. Chaffin, can I question you on a couple of things because there's been a lot of miscommunication?
Certainly.
And the first, the first thing that I want to ask yourself, and, and I don't mean this as like an attorney judge type thing, I'm just, I want clarification. I know you're our city attorney, but I want to know, what is your specialties because you helped us with this process? So what is your expertise, sir?
My expertise is I'm planning on land use, including sequin and environmental analysis.
Okay. So if that's your specialty and with Esquire by your name and you being with Lord Eagle Firm, I suggest you're an expert in this.
Yes.
Okay. Following that, did this council not ask roughly a year ago for this to be worked on?
Yes, it was over a year ago by my recollection.
Okay. And then as we progressed through this, you wrote this with such language that it has barriers in there to where not a single one of our council members can go rogue, so to speak, and take action on their own. It takes a majority of this council to do anything.
Without classifying about council members going rogue, I would, I would say that it takes a majority of the council members to be able to act on this, yes.
There you go. It takes, it takes a majority of the council to take action on anything.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. With that, at any time, because it was implied when we listened to the tapes, that the council, as, as the vice mayor said, we've already heard through community that we want to do away with the Planning Commission. Was that ever said from this council and asked of you with this ordinance rewrite?
I have never received any such direction from the City Council.
Okay. Thank you, sir. And moving forward with your expertise, do you know of any cases that an express lane, so to speak, would be a benefit to economic growth in any of the cities that you've worked with in your career?
Yes, and there are some cities that do have an express lane of various different types.
Okay. Thank you. I ask all those questions to really bring it back on high center. This was never to do away with the Planning Commission. I want to thank them. They do a hell of a job. They have a lot of stacks of paperwork to go through, and they are an extension of this council. When you look in the California code, the, and Mr. Attorney, please correct me if I'm wrong on this, but when you look at the code, the Planning Commission is not a legislative body. The Planning Commission is an advisory commission that is an extension to review our general plan, our specific plans, make sure that we do development in line with those, and then make recommendations back to us. And then as an extension of that, they also hear matters concerning conditional use permits, make it an opinion or a ruling on that that is always appealable to the council. Am I correct?
Yes, generally correct.
And so this should be a collaborative role, and I go back to exactly what was said earlier. All they, all it was, was a negative, we're taking their job, and that was never the impact, but, you know, they do a great job. It was all about trying to do what is in the best interest of this city. I referred back to a case that held this city at bay for over a year and talked about it would have been nice for it to just go straight to the council because you went through the whole process, and then you lost another month or two for it to come to the council and be appealed and everything. At the end of the day, Mr. Chaffin, the council is the only legislative quasi-judicial. We set the policy and the parameters, correct?
That's correct. The council makes all the legislative determinations. No other body in the city has that authority. And then to the extent that the City Council has designated certain authority to bodies, it has also reserved that authority in itself if there is an appeal.
Thank you for that clarification because I, I forgot that, that's an important fact, that we reserve our, our authority as the council. As we go through this, the case in point that I brought forward was a use permit that had 60 conditions attached to the back of it. And my simple point was if that would have just had a fast track, it could have saved a couple of months and some heartache for the city. It wasn't about showing someone favor and using the good old Noid network because, as the vice mayor said, that's one of the precise reasons that I ran. I was tired of seeing that in this community. It, that culture had to change. So with that, we could, as a council, impose 100 conditions on a conditional use permit, and they're fine. We don't need an ordinance to impose conditions on a use permit.
Under the city's municipal code, if there's an appeal to the City Council on a use permit, the City Council has the same authority to impose conditions of approval.
Okay. Thank you. Given all of that, all the arguments that I heard the other night, when I listened to the audio, just in my mind, do not make sense. We're not taking anybody's job. I want them to do their job. We have enough material to work through ourselves. We need to come together as a council and our commissions, understanding that their advisory roles to the council, and we're here to do what's in the best interest of this community, period. It's not about a good old boy network. God knows, that's why we got into this, to tear that down because there was too much of that happening. This is about doing what's right, getting economic growth going, and this may never be used. It may be used once. But if a project comes up that is already contentious before it ever hits the planning department, then we can rise up very quickly and say, instead of it having to be heard twice, we're just going to fast track it right to where it's going to be heard one and done, and we, we go forward. That's the only purpose of this. It is not to take away any of the jobs that the Planning Commission does, and I want to be very clear on that. I wasn't the one that was the instigator of this. I was just one of the five of us that said, you know what, this is a good idea to think outside of the box and do what's right for this city. So I just want to clear the air real fast from last week's meeting. We're not doing away with the Planning Commission. They have a job. They are appointed, and they're an advisory commission. And then with that, Mr. Mayor, I think you know where I stand on this.
I have an idea.
Yeah.
All right.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to call man on Mr. Chaffin, Councilman Shaw's, what he just said. The point where you said that there was a project came through and there was 60 conditions on it, those 60 conditions weren't made up and done by the council. It was, those 60 conditions were done on the department head that was in charge of our department at that time. And the department head suggested to the Planning Commission that these need to be done in order to make this project go forward. And they took the, they took the instructions from the department head at the time, thinking that, you know, he's, a little bit has to live in, or not, more knowledge than them. That was a great thing. So it's not the Planning Commission that's slowing projects down. The department was a little understaffed at the time. We, we've just gone through for the last year. We've had some issues with that department the last, the last year. But it wasn't the planning commissioners getting stuff taken too long. It was, it was getting the paperwork to them and getting these projects to move forward. That was a comment that was made in the video or in the audio that you heard that night. It wasn't their fault. It was departments that, for that, this last year or year and a half that's been going on. So I don't know. I sat there and listened to them. If you saw their, if you saw their faces that were there, they were, they were hurt. They were hurt. And it's not that we're getting rid of them. They just said they're, we're doing the, we're going to just be doing the job for them. And why should we be here if you're going to do the job for them? Because they take pride in doing the job for us. So, thank you.
Sure. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, a point of clarification, because I just want it very clear because facts can get muddied. The conditional use permit that came forward, the 60 conditions that were attached were negotiated between the applicant and the opponent. Then they were worked with staff and brought forward. It did not come from staff. And back to the, where things got bogged down, that was the old culture that we had. And again, that's why I'm glad the culture is changing and we can move forward. But it was not our staff that was holding up that. It was a legal process that had to be negotiated between the two parties.
All right. Thank you. I will, in light of what's been said, give one more opportunity for public to comment, if any, out there? All right. If not, we can come back with a motion.
Okay.
If any.
Through the mayor.
Yep.
I move to introduce an ordinance update that will amend the Yuba City Municipal Code to allow for direct City Council review of use permits by amending sections, what was it, 8-5.7001 and 8-5.7003 of Article 70 of Chapter 5 of Title 8, and Section 8-5.7101 of Article 71 of Chapter 5 of Title 8, and waive the first reading.
Second.
First and second to approve staff's recommendation. All those in favor, please.
Aye.
And opposed?
Aye.
All right. Four to one passes. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number eight, amended community sponsorship policy presented by Terrell.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item was brought before you per your request. You wanted to go over the newly adopted community sponsorship policy that was adopted in, I think, March of last year. It didn't go exactly the way that council had intended, so this is your opportunity to discuss how you would like it to go forward for this budget year. So looking forward to your conversation.
All right. Thank you very much. We have any discussion?
Through the mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Terrell, for taking this and the work that's there. There was a couple of pieces that were missing that I had asked for at our last meeting, and maybe I was vague. I, I take responsibility if I didn't convey it properly. But my concern is a one and done. As far as the applications come in, we look at it with the budget, and the money's gone for the entire year. I would like to see that broken into quarterly allotments. So if we budget $40,000 for the whole year, it's $10,000 allotments per quarter. And then the second thing was if anything above a certain dollar amount, and I would suggest $500, $800, I mean, we can negotiate that all day long, but anything above a certain amount must come back before the council for approval.
Well, currently, everything above $0 comes to you. So that was what my direction was last year. And so that's why I kind of left it out of the $800. So I did leave it vague because I knew that there was different conversations, and I couldn't capture them all with what you had decided. And so I hope to do that tonight, and so we can get the document the way you want it to be.
All right. Thank you. I will, I will be more clear on that. Yeah, we do approve it. It's called a budget. And what was happening last year is we approved the allotted amount, they came in, and they were gone. And so what I'm talking is not just the allotment through the budget, but I'm talking the individual donations, contributions, dispersments that we make above a certain level that's within that allotted amount needs to come back before us, whether it be consent agenda or whatnot. It needs to be looked at by the entire council because who's to say that we want to give Organization A $5,000 and give Organization B $500? We should be looking at what they give back to the community and what the benefit to the community is. And we've got a lot of great partners out there. But I don't, I don't want this to be that the first people that are in get the lion's share, and we don't need to run out of money before we're halfway through our fiscal year. And that's my concern.
I think that we could still do that through the budget process, and so it's not just a one and done. But as you allocate what you, you know, if you see what kind of applications and needs there are, instead of having, what I, I would suggest, instead of having $40,000 is that you, you look at the, the general need, and you can say, okay, well, $40,000 didn't quite do it, so maybe we need $50,000. And so in that regard, then you could say, well, we'll, as you say, through the budget process, we'll do it this way, this way, this way. And I still agree, I still, the in-kind, which I had mentioned in the staff report, is a little gray area that staff is more concerned with than council because it affects especially the Parks and Recreation Budget and Public Works, you know, how we account for that. But I do, instead of $800, you know, I still think that, you know, because that could add up to, you know, it could be $8,000 really quick with the, I would think that anything over $0 would come to you for approval.
And I would be fine if we brought back every, every one and approved it. I would have no problem with that. It's just that way we're all aware, and I just know what we ran in last year because I had reached out and inquired about the possibility of us supporting some different agencies, and we spoke, you know, like, I think it was September, October, and it's like, it's all gone. It's like, how can it be gone? We're three months into the year, and that's what we want to avoid. So.
And so however you guys decide you want to do that through the budget process, I think having it just as a generic item in the budget or in the policy through the budget process, you could, you can actually line out to staff how you want it divvied up, and then we'll follow that. Because it just seems to me if, if we, having a little bit of flexibility, as long as everything's coming back to you, will allow council to be able to do what they need to do throughout the year to support the community.
Through the mayor, I would like to expand on, on Councilman Shaw's suggestion. Coming now from a private sector background where the company that I end up working for takes multiple requests at multiple times of the year for charitable giving, I fully agree with Councilman Shaw in regards to you can't have a one and done because throughout the year, different things come up that, that perhaps you would like to, to participate in, in some charitable giving. So I would, I would offer a suggestion that through the budgetary process, we have some longstanding relationships with certain events or partnerships. I think we take those through the budgetary process, but we leave enough funding so that we could implement the quarterly, the quarterly giving if something comes up. And that way, it isn't a one and done. And I will cite certain events that, that, again, we've had a longstanding relationship with and, and a partnership with going back many, many years. You know, we have partnerships with the Chamber of Commerce. We have partnerships with our Downtown Business Association. We have partnerships with the B.O. Military Liaison Committee. I mean, there's a host of these things that I think we can take a look at through the budget process of funding, but I also think that other things come up throughout the year, as, as was discussed earlier, and therefore we should reserve some of that funding through the budget process to become available and, for lack of a better term, doled out throughout the rest of the year. Quarterly is, is how our company does it, and, you know, that way you can basically tell someone, hey, look, we're, our charitable giving for the, or community giving for the, for the quarters over, you're welcome to apply for the next quarter's allocation. It seems to work for us. It also allows this council to, to review requests and, and vet them out and make sure that they are aligned with the things that we want to support in our community.
Thank you.
Through the mayor. I, I like both of your ideas. I think there's areas, in particular with those longstanding, that we can agree on. And that could be monies that, within that budget that we set aside, so it doesn't come through this process, that we already know these are our longstanding partners. And I would further even invite our partners to say, how do I tie myself into one of the priorities of the city? So there is some connectedness to that vision as, as a city that we're working together. And then as we do these quarterly set-asides, I also, I think, ask for each of us as a council to have some discretionary opportunities to bring forward, you know, a potential event or something that the city has just, hasn't been involved before, and it might be a good opportunity for, for us to present. So I don't know, in that quarterly review, I'm giving a rough number, not, not set in stone, let's say we had $5,000. Let's say we had $5,000 set aside for each quarter. Each of us got $1,000. So, you know, within that, we're supporting across the board of all, as a council. And that way, I think that would be more fair and equitable all the way through. But I would say with these larger, put those in the budget, doesn't come through this process at all, not even set through here, that they know, we know.
That last comment, was that, I missed that. What was not set through here?
That I'm saying that these agreements, that we agree, and I'll use because they're right here, downtown.
The long-term stuff.
Right.
Okay.
That whatever we have set aside, that comes out through the budgetary and it's already set aside. But this other piece, that the quarterly aspect is a great idea, but I also say, give each council member an opportunity to have the discretion to say, oh, I know Manny's going to get $1,000, Shaw will get him $1,000, you, each of us would get $1,000 and say, look, I'm bringing forward out of this fund and this is a group that I've been involved with and is part of this community, like to support him. And you may not be familiar, and you may bring someone completely different that I may not be familiar, and allows for more equitableness and fairness across the board.
I understand what you're saying in principle and agree with it in principle. But I, for one, I don't want personal discretion over one dime of the city's money. Because it all come through us.
No, this is not personal. This is not, I mean.
Well, if I get $1,000 that I'm in charge of, I'm not comfortable with that.
No, 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 that we, it comes out of this process, but designated amounts for each council to have, it's pretty much doing it. We kind of do that now. I mean, think about the process of this last go-round. The entire, what was it, $50,000 that we had set aside for last year or this year? Was it $40,000?
We had $40,000.
$40,000. So all of that money was already pretty much decided by perhaps yourself and Cardosa. By the time the three of us figured out that was done, it was gone. So that's what I'm saying. This allows for a lot more different voices.
Perhaps in the, by the way, we agree. It's just the mechanism. I don't know, because say, for example, we went with that and I had something that someone's requesting 500, you had something that you need 1,500, but you're only allotted $1,000. If we had discretion across the board, we're always able to bring things up on our own, right?
I think so.
So if we had a big pot of money from which, that we can kind of, for the optional, I think what Mark was talking about, the contingency fund, if you will, after, above and beyond the regular longstanding things, I would add fireworks to the list of longstanding things, even though it's only been a year.
And it's not on this list.
Right. We can add that.
It actually was on this list. It was included in it.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't see it on the report.
Oh, yeah.
Well, because it was, I mean, it was on the reconciliation.
Oh, there you go. Okay.
That was part of the 40.
I think if we had a chunk that we, the longstanding predictable things, good to go, we try to come up with some other stuff for the stuff that maybe we don't know about. Maybe somebody wants to do an initial event or something. You might be in favor, I might be in favor, we both might be in favor. Rather than dividing it up five ways, that takes it a little bit far for me to wrap my head around. But in principle, the job's still going to get done.
I agree with you. I think that there is, just because this last year, there was not, there was a process. You utilize a process, and I agree to that process. I just would like that there's an opportunity for all of us to bring forward potential events that we can, you know, agree in. And that's our, whatever that amount is, it's our discretion. If we're going to bring every single one to the council, it's going to take three of us or more to vote anyhow. So, I mean, I'm in favor of that. But again, I'm in favor of removing some of this as part of that list and putting it into the budget and deciding that that's going to be something that we five agree. I would like a five agreement on that. Thank you.
All right. Nothing? All right, have we given you sufficient guidance to move forward, Terrell?
So I have, everything over $0 comes to council regarding sponsorships. We're going to be having a, through the budget process, kind of a one and done for the long-term projects. And then there'll be a discretionary fund separate that will be allocated quarterly by council.
That makes sense to me. Are you good? All right. All right, I'll, see, we have to take a motion on that? Uh-oh, wait a minute. I can feel it over here.
Out to the public?
Oh, public comment. Any public comment? Yes, sir. Come on up. Thank you for that. Usually, I've been good at remembering that lately. Yeah.
Good evening, Thomas Burns. Well, when I came here, I was nice and calm and cool. But this little issue really chaps my hide, okay? So I want to, I remember in history, and I think it was Daniel Boone, and he became a public servant. And there's a little story that goes about where there was some woman that had a need and he used the taxpayers' money to help that need. And a guy called him on it and said, you know, I can't vote for you in the next election because it's not your money to give. And that's the bottom line for me. This is the people's money and charitable contributions from government is how we're in this stinking mess that we're in in California already. So that's my thoughts on the matter. It's not your money to give, whether, you know, to pet projects or things that you like. You know, the city money is to take care of the basic needs of the city. That's what I believe.
Thank you, Tom. Did you want to?
Yeah. Mr. Burns, thanks for speaking. I'll kind of help clarify a little bit for you because I think the term charitable giving, when we use it the way it is, kind of gets loosely interchanged. When I think of that fund that's to be used, it is for stuff that is for the benefit of the community at large, such as the fireworks show we did, such as the sponsorship and kind of stuff with the DBA for the Christmas stroll, for the summer stroll, partnering up with nonprofits to benefit the community, like the Kiwanis, like the Rotary Clubs, which invest a lot of money into our community to put back, take for example, the pickleball courts that got redone last year. I'm not a big pickleball fan. I played, but that's not my cup of tea. But at the same time, and they know that, we lost miserably two games, we were done. But, you know, they came along and they spent a lot of money from their organization, combined with many others, to do that for a public benefit. So when we say this particular amount of money going, it needs to be going to help benefit the general public and our community for our quality of life and things coming. It's not meant to give to, you know, charity, A, B, nonprofit, for whatever. It is for the general benefit of this community and our quality of life. Does that help clarify? Okay.
Through the mayor, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Because I want to follow up. I used the word charitable, and I used it in response to the fact that that's how our private company, I didn't mean that the city would be involved in charitable contributions. And Councilman Shaw, I think, expressed the community, the quality of life types of events that we try to participate in for the greater good of all these citizens, not a special interest group.
All right. Anybody else from public care to comment? Glad we got, thank you for asking the question because I would hate for you to leave thinking something was different than what it is. So, okay, now we can move forward. If anybody's interested. We need to vote on it. I think.
Hold on for a second.
Adopt a resolution?
We're not, really not, we don't have anything to approve yet.
As long as the city council has given consensus as to.
All right, so we're good. We don't need to vote on that. We have a consensus, and she's clear, so we're good. We'll come back and we'll vote on that. Now, number nine, appointments to Flavored Tobacco Ad Hoc Committee, as brought up by Councilmember Boongarden. It's an issue that I think we didn't understand how, what a hot topic it was until we brought the potential issue forward. So we have a lot of folks who want to, seeking our opinion, giving us their position and their opinion on the topic. We want to hear everybody in detail on both sides of this issue. And one of the processes we have is available to us is appoint an ad hoc committee of two council members who are interested. And they would be designated, I'm just going to read the staff report, thank you, Terrell, designated to steer the ad hoc committee will coordinate with staff to solicit citizen involvement, facilitate the meetings, identify necessary staff to participate in each meeting and coordinate the preparation of a report with recommendations as applicable to the city council. So basically, they hear both sides in great detail, weigh all the options, weigh the information they may give, and then come back to the council for some recommendations. So I support that process. I think it's valuable. I think it's efficient. And I would ask any member of my colleagues up here that might be interested and participate to speak up. Let me know.
Through the mayor.
Yeah, while I was waiting. It's okay, say, okay.
If you would like to say something, sure.
Yeah, I'd like to say something, please. I had a meeting this morning with the Health and Safe Neighborhood Coalition, Tammy Anderson and their group, and they would be more than happy to assist us with this whole entire program. They said they would come here and make a presentation. They would help with the workshops, educate in the community. They are, would be, would want, they really want to be involved to assist us and help us 100%. So whoever would like to be in the ad hoc committee, I suggest that we get a hold of these folks. It's the Health and Safety Coalition and also the Sutter County Human Services Health Division, Tammy Anderson. And they will, they got everything down for us. We more or less just kind of bring the group together and they'll do it all for us and teach and educate the whole community. And then they could come back and they can give us the policies, procedures that we could put forward in the future. So that's the suggestion that I would like to make for whoever's going to do this.
Thank you.
Through the mayor, I would volunteer to be on the ad hoc committee. And Councilman Cardosa, I appreciate you bringing Tammy forward. She has, her group has been here before. They presented to us as a council. And there's a lot of other opportunities. I like to hear both sides of the issue, so I'm interested in hearing, you know, from the tobacco control piece of it and that, and then also from our businesses. And perhaps there's a good opportunity there. So I'll volunteer for that.
Through the mayor, one of the, I've had a little bit of dialogue with city staff on this. I think procedurally, one of the first meetings needs to be with the business community, those folks that are actually in retail sales of the flavored tobacco and the vaping. I don't know, at this point, I want to mix the two groups. I want to really hear a lot more from the retailers first, assuming that if, I don't see anybody else raising their hand to be on the ad hoc committee, so I guess it's, unless you want to, Manny.
I'm going to have to pass this here, I'm sorry.
Okay. So through the mayor, yeah, I would certainly want to serve with Councilwoman Espendola. I know she has subject matter expertise on this and has dealt with it. But I think procedurally, just for the council, I would be working with her and the staff. I think the first step here is to hear from the group we haven't really heard much from, which is the businesses.
I agree. All right, thank you very much. All right, is this a consensus thing or a vote thing, sir?
Motion.
Yeah, a motion.
Through the. I'm so sorry. This is a designation, so you don't need to take this out to public. You can do it by consensus or you can do it by vote.
So either way, let's just do it by vote. Do we have anybody from the public would like to talk about it? Yes, sir. Can you just say? Yeah. Just wait until he's done and then we'll do it, obviously.
Good evening, Thomas Burns. So that's why we're here, the public, to give our input. And when I read this on the agenda, you know, my thoughts were, is there anything that government doesn't want to get their hand in? You know, whether a guy smokes some flavored tobacco or does a little vaping, you know, I really can't see that as being the business of the city. I mean, I see people vaping all the time, smoking cigarettes, you know, drinking alcohol, smoking weed. I mean, can we legislate morality to all the people? That's my thoughts.
Thank you, sir. Do you have a comment?
I do. I want to, again, as we did the first time we raised this issue, just assure anybody who's involved in this to understand that it is not, the end goal here isn't to necessarily put forth any kind of regulation, it's to discuss an issue that's been raised to us numerous times by the community. So through the people speaking to this council about this type of thing, it is important for us, at least it is for me, and it seems like it is for my colleagues, to begin the process of understanding more about it before we take any action whatsoever. There are some issues as this becomes available to children. I think it's prudent that we understand those better, but certainly at this point, there's no preconceived notion about us putting together any kind of an ordinance or regulation prohibiting that. It certainly could come from that. We could also choose to do absolutely nothing. But at least we are listening to the public that elected us and has asked us to take a peek into this issue.
I would like to say the same, in addition to the fact that many people have approached us independently and as group-wise and met, as Councilman Cardosa mentioned, and I have met with students, parents, owners of the businesses, and to just hearing them out on the different subjects of their concerns. And I think as a council member, and I speak of myself, that if we have many community members that are voting, community members, asking us to look at this, I would say it is my responsibility to bring it forward and to, and step forward in this discussion as an expert in the area of tobacco and to work with Vice Mayor Boongarden. So again, this is not an idea that raised from the council. This was a discussion raised from the community, brought forward to the council. And so we are responding to the community asking us to do this. It's not one of us asking an ordinance, an additional one. We have, we have yet to determine that. We'll let the process be the process and see where we land.
Through the mayor.
Yep.
Sensing all the enthusiasm up here, I move to designate Vice Mayor Boongarden and Councilwoman Espendola to serve on the city council Flavored Tobacco Ad Hoc Committee from March 2020 to June 2020.
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unopposed? Thank you very much. Congratulations. Plate's getting bigger. All right, this is a quick one. Number 10, appointments to city, UBS City Boards and Commissions. Vice Mayor Boongarden and I conducted interviews with four individuals on February 21st. One opening for Parks and Recreation Commission, two on the senior commission, and one to be the city representative on the Sutter County Planning Commission. Those people are Amrin Bath for Parks and Recreation, did a good job on his interview, Joanne Ellis, coming back for another round on the senior commission, as is Tony Kirland, coming back. Welcome to have, or happy to have all of them. And then Janice Shannon will be representing the city over at Sutter County. It's really as simple as that. Is anybody in the public care to comment on those appointments? And if not, we can hear something from the council or a motion. Tony was complaining.
Do you want to make a comment?
Wake up, Tony.
Would you like to make a comment, Tony, before we do this? Through the mayor. I'd like, oh, Michael.
Yeah, through the mayor, before you jump into the motion there, Councilman Cardosa. I would just like to say that in supporting Ben Moody over there. I would just like to say that in supporting Ben Moody over there, that as we're working, in particular with our planning commission, the work that we might, you know, the conversations, the communication, that I would be interested in asking you to, in a way, work with our planning commissioner that is going to be designated or assigned to Sutter County. And if there's a way that you could perhaps meet with her monthly or every other month and, and so if there's pieces of information missing and so that, you know, we can get whatever's happening at the county level and vice versa, if there's an opportunity for you to do that, I would really appreciate some sort of feedback, report back to help us improve the communication, both directions, in light of the issues that have been brought forward. Thank you.
Through the mayor, I guess I said something. Mark, go ahead. Through the mayor, Councilmember Espandola, the person that does that position makes a comment at each planning commission meeting if there's been anything done. They, they do an update.
Here we, here we go.
Well, they do an update.
They do, but, but as part of the report, I'm trying to work to get the city council on a regular monthly basis. I can include that item in there just to get feedback of what's going on with the county to the council.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Through the mayor, to our city attorney, because we certainly consider you an expert in this, and this could be a question to city staff as well. And given that there does seem to be a disconnect right now between our planning commission and the city council, in your experience in dealing with planning commissions and city councils, are there liaisons provided from council to planning commissions to improve the lines of communication?
I have never heard of a liaison, but it would certainly be an innovative idea.
Anything that would prohibit that, that you're aware of?
There is nothing to prohibit it as long as the Brown Act is followed for both bodies.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Do you have?
Do you want to say something, Dave? Sure? All righty. Through the mayor, I'd like to make a motion to appoint the city of UBS board commissioners, approve the city council screening committee recommendations for appointments to the senior Parks and Recreation Commission, and appointed to the Sutter County Planning Commission.
Second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed, non-unanimous. We want to do number 11, future agenda items. We have on here for March 18th, we're going to recognize Women's History Month, National Ag Week, and an Ag Day proclamation, and a Punjabi Christian Center proclamation. They made a big milestone in their church. Anybody else have any, carry, add anything, mention anything? All right. We'll move on to, wow, good. City council reports, beginning with Councilmember Cardoza.
All righty. It's been a fairly quiet couple of weeks. I must start with city events. I attended a swearing in of our brand new police sergeant, Michael Bullard. And then, of course, our, our monthly Waffle Wednesdays at the senior center. Can't pass that up. It's a great time. We're getting bigger and better every month. More and more folks are showing up. Meetings, I attended the UBS Sutter Transit Authority meeting, Councilmember Shaw, I sat in the back row and listened to the regional waste management meeting, I attended the regional housing authority meeting, I attended the builder, the building better partnerships through the regional housing authority. That's our three jurisdictions. They're moving forward on a complex in Grass Valley for low income housing. Attended the planning commission meeting, chamber events, I attended the monthly ambassadors meeting. We had a wind down Wednesday and social night. And then, of course, we had last Friday night, we had our 35th annual chamber gala and award ceremony. It was a fun time, quite a few people at the Hard Rock Casino. For community events, two weekends ago, it was everything Bakai. So we had a grand opening of the Bakai Museum. We attended the ambassador's reception. Of course, we're in the parade. And then we attended the Hop Sing Society Dinner, excuse me. And I want to thank Frank M. Booth for the Bakai reception also. And then Sunday night, I attended the, excuse me, Saturday night, I attended the 550 year birthday anniversary of Guru Nakah, the celebration hosted by the Punjabi American Heritage Society. They had a pretty good full turnout. They had a panel of six from our community, and it was telecasted on the Indian, the India broadcasting system throughout the world in the United States. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Interesting. Very well done, Councilman Cardoza. I don't, I was expecting something to be rolled out, and the list goes that way. You make me sound like I just hang out at home and do nothing. So I just have a few items. One of them that I, in the future, have a conversation and I'll be meeting with our executive team on, I went to a sustainability summit through USC, and I learned quite a bit about developing cities and figuring out ways to do things green and clean. So that was very interesting. I did that for three days. I received a scholarship through the Leo Cities, the Women's Caucus. So happy about that. Learned a lot. Also, if you're looking for a job, not particularly my job, but someone else's, and I'm not talking about the folks that are trying to get reelected either, the UBS Sutter Homeless Consortium is looking for an executive director. And if you're interested, go on our website. It's the UBS Sutter, all one word. It's Y S homelessconsortium.org. It's posted right on the very front. So if you think that you are able to work as a nonprofit that I'm on the board and one of the founders, and be happy to have an executive director. If you are not familiar, but March is Women's History Month, and I'm very excited about celebrating this month and acknowledging all the women in this room and leadership and others. And I also learned that this is the 100 year of actually the 19th amendment being passed and guaranteeing us as women the constitutional right to vote. And I thought, what an appropriate thing to bring up on March 3rd, to vote. Women, vote. Yes. So I got my I voted button. I got my little, little apple, because educate yourself to make sure you vote correct, right? So I am all in on that. So I hope that if you haven't had the opportunity to vote, please do so. On March 7th, in celebration of Women's Month, I will be speaking to 50 young college women through the Upward Bound Program. It's an all female presentation. On March 8th, I have the honor of being the Masters of Ceremony for East Center, who does wonderful work in nonprofit, on their first annual International Women's Day. And we're going to hold this at Hard Rock Cafe. And we announced this about a month ago, and believe it or not, we are full. We have 170 women that are going to be showing up this Sunday. We have an amazing guest speaker coming in, Professor Neal M. Cantalugo. We have a panel, Judge O'Connor. We have Chairwoman Glenda Nelson of Rancheria, Enterprise Rancheria. We have a former UBS County Supervisor, Mary Jane Grego. We have the Alliance for Hispanic Advancement President Vera Carrier is going to be on the panel, and I have the honor to emcee the event. And some of the proceeds will go to a memorial, funds for scholarships for future educators who want to become teachers in early education or just some sort of education system. So that's how I am hoping to launch into March is Women's History Month. So here we go. Thank you.
Thank you. And Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Been rather busy myself. I don't get waffles, not even on Wednesday. And to answer my fellow colleague at the end, Home Depot, it's called Simple Green. Anyway, that was a joke. During the past couple of weeks, as Councilmember Cardoza said, I had transit meeting and RWMA meeting. No significant activity out of either of those. The RWMA, it's 1383, continues as we've discussed now at the last couple of meetings. That seems to be what's on everyone's mind with what's coming down with those regulations and what we're going to be faced with. Want to extend thank yous to all the leadership of the Bakai Festival and the Young Family for the invitation and the hospitality. Great event. It was the first time I was actually able to attend because I've been chasing my daughter at rodeos for the last decade, and it always conflicted. So I had a wonderful time. It was very, very fortunate to be there. The most significant thing that has come about in, in the work outside of the council here has been the ad hoc committee with the development impact fees and such. And we are prepared to bring our first recommendations to the council, to the next council meeting. So that is made up of not just members of the city and the council, but developers, realtors, lenders, engineers. We got some wonderful people on there, and we're trying to figure out what we can do to get economic growth going. So look forward to that in the next meeting. And you guys will have the, all the information in your packet. And I'm really jazzed about the discussions that's gone on there. It's, I think it's really positive and really good. So we'll be looking for some action from the council. The only other thing that's been going on continually is the Bog Stewart tax agreement for the Bog Stewart Master Plan. That seems to have, at best, stalled right now. And I'm really hoping that the, the county can come and sit down with us at the table and let's get this thing done, because that is a huge, huge potential for both the city and the county long term. And I am very optimistic that we can come together and get this thing figured out. And I'm looking forward to continuing my work on, on that committee. With that, sir, I'll hand it back to you.
Thank you very much. Vice mayor.
Through the mayor, touch on a few things that my colleagues, we're at the Bakai Festival. Marysville does a wonderful job with that, thanks to all the different groups that invited us to participate. It really is probably, if not the best attended parade. It's certainly right up there with them. Not to be, not to outdo our own 4th of July parade, but it is a, it's a different animal, and it's been going on for many, many years. Attended the chambers, Government Affairs Committee meeting this morning, the Chamber of Commerce. There are always a very interesting meeting, dealing with the concerns of the business community. Also want to give a huge acknowledgement to their, their gala. Over 500 people at the Hard Rock Cafe. The vibe with the business community right now seems fairly, fairly good, and we're, we're working hard to continue that. As Councilman Shaw said, the master taxes change agreement does seem to be bogged down a bit in process. I think there are things happening to try to move that along. And at the end of the day, I think my colleague, Councilman Shaw, as well as staff, know there is a win-win agreement out there to be had. We just are working through the process with the county to try to get there. On the Development Impact Fee Committee, again, this is, this has been a great effort so far. We're going to bring some exciting things to you that undoubtedly will begin the process of being open for business from a different level in regards to our residential and our commercial community. They are very well engaged. We have representatives that are coming together to explore all the options. And I want to thank staff especially for, for their efforts in helping with that. Today, on a more light note, I had an opportunity to read to four classes at Linkcrest School. And let me tell you that this was second, third, and fourth graders. Teachers are amazing people. They, they, they have their hands full with those, those youngsters. You always make yourself available for some questions after the fact. And believe me, it ranges from how old are you to who's your favorite football team? And so anyway, I've got Riverbend School coming up on Friday. Enjoy doing that. I also want to acknowledge our police chief, our fire chief, Public Works Director, in regards to their efforts behind the scenes that's going on that no one's really seeing right now in preparation should something begin to escalate with the coronavirus. Very impressed with their efforts so far. I know there's also some meetings going on for coordinated information so that we don't run into any of the, of the difficulties or challenges that were presented last time we had an event face the community. The information will be shared, and it will, at least it's intended right now to come from one source that everybody can agree with. There will be any confusion. Final, final item I have is kind of exciting. Begun the process of meeting with the city of Marysville in regards to the 4th of July fireworks. There's definitely interest there again. We're going to be pulling together. And so I want to make sure that staff realizes they'll be engaged early in this process instead of two weeks before. There are some things that are going to change. The shoot site will remain in Riverfront Park, but it'll be moved a bit south. And the city of Marysville is trying to tie in a music, a free music event at the amphitheater where they hold the, the stampede down there as well. So stand by for more information on that. You know, I think that was a great success that we all here in the city had a part in last year, and looking forward to bringing it back to the community. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's start with the lighter stuff, is that I too attended Bakai festivities, and thank you to all the folks on the other side of the river who put so much, obviously, a lot of work into making all those events happen. It really is an opportunity for our entire community and especially Marysville to shine. And I think you had another successful year could be agreed upon there. It was a really good time. Let's see here. Attended the Have a Heart for Kids Run over there at River Valley High School. Was a judge for a chili contest at the Moose Lodge. Was able to attend the Peace Officer of the Year Dinner in honor of our officer, Charm Singh, and many other officers in their community for all the hard work they do every year. So congratulations to Officer Singh. I had an opportunity to read yesterday at the Plazium, which I'd never been inside before. But that's a really wonderful resource and part of our community. I would not wear the Dr. Seuss hat, but I did read a Dr. Seuss book. They, and, I looked for that one. It was another, something about a fish. But it was still good. Attended the Taylor, excuse me, the Chamber Gala Award Ceremony with some of my colleagues over there at Hard Rock Casino. Congratulations to all the winners over there. One I remember off the top of my head is Jeff Stevens for Sale of, and he definitely, he's been here before and presented to us and does a really good job. Let's hope one day he'll put himself out of business, but we'll see about that. But what a great job rallying people together. SECOG, the primary thing about that was a, a regional trails project they have going. We have our project, I've talked about it before. I think we have a good opportunity to try to do something with the Union Pacific Railroad property, extending it from Sutter, hopefully all the way into UBS City Bridge and Plumas, and on, on over the, perhaps the new bridge, or do something with the trestle, and then working with Marysville to hopefully link it. My, my vision is something that's been talked about is all the way out to Sycamore Ranch. I think it'd be a wonderful opportunity if we could get on that thing and go, and you look at a map of UBS City, you have a green stripe right through the middle of it. It'd be really nice to have a long, narrow park like that. There's money out there. I think it goes onto our, one of our goals and priorities, adding to our quality of life. Also, you have things like that, and you keep it safe. You'll hopefully attract new residents and businesses too. So let's hope that keeps going. We are having a meeting coming up. I don't remember, we changed the date today, and I don't remember off the top of my head, but they are coming up here to meet with myself and our, some other city staff to try to get this ball rolling. For the Greater Sacramento Economic Council, I'm going to be in a video. They call it the Download. We're going down to a TV studio in Sacramento tomorrow to talk about all things economic development related for UBS City. We've picked a few hot topics, who only have a certain amount of time. But the idea is to give, spread out the good word about our community, UBS City, the Sutter County is going to have representative UBS County as well. They're going to have some airtime. But the intent is to attract businesses and develop our economy and let people know, the site selector folks, what we have to offer, what we bring to the table, what our potential is. And again, the common theme of we are open for business. So I'm going to put on the smile, put on the suit, be enthusiastic for everybody, beat the war drum, to try to get some folks to come and pay us a visit. So I'll be doing So I'll be doing that tomorrow at 10 o'clock. Other than that, things, business as usual. And I want to thank everybody for coming tonight. I do want to acknowledge that tonight is Election Day, and my hat's off to all the candidates out there, win, lose, or draw, you're all winners, because it is not an easy thing to do. We all appear know that. Put yourself out there and give it your best shot for the benefit of the community. So I really respect that, and best of luck to all of them. I would like to adjourn today, before we go to into close, back in a closed session for one final item, in memory of a community hero, a community advocate, somebody who is longtime, really done a lot of good for our community, that's Mr. Ron Givinetti, he recently passed away. A really good man. Well, he is, he was wealthy, and, and he did not mind at all reaching into his checkbook and helping out, especially children and law enforcement. He was a wonderful man, and he will be missed. And we'd like to adjourn today in a closed session in memory of Mr. Ron Givinetti. Thank you all very much.